Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the board meeting of January thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Happy New Year to everyone. We are grateful to be back together again with all of you, those who are board colleagues and the administration, as well as the community that is joining us tonight. So with this, we will call the meeting to order, and the secretary will call the roll.
Ms. Manzer?
Here.
Mr. Abarkah?
President.
Ms. Cortez?
Here.
Mr. Hogan? Dr. Jones?
Present.
Mr. Wasserstrom?
Here.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Here.
Thank you, Mr. Hogan.
Yep, thank you.
All right, thank you, everyone. The first item is the approval of the agenda. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, it has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the agenda? Hearing none. The secretary will please call the roll.
Ms. Manzer?
Yes.
Mr. Abarkah?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Dr. Jones? Mr. Wasserstrom?
Yes.
Thank you, Dr. Jones. Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes.
Thank you, the agenda is approved. I will now turn this over for the workshop presentation by the superintendent.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to welcome everyone who's here. Happy New Year to all, as we're getting our slides up. I have a couple of important updates to share with the board and the community. And for our board, during our executive session, some of these things I've already covered, but I want to make sure that we're covering it again for the greater community, and especially given the fact that it is being livestreamed. So we can move to the next slide, team. Next slide, okay. So I want to update, no, I'm sorry, this slide here reopening up. Go back one more. Okay, thank you. So I want to make sure that we're updating everybody on the reopening of KCPS. Many of our parents and community members are wanting to know where are we as far as the school district is concerned with getting kids back into school. We have been working extremely hard as a team to work with our medical partners, our partners over at the Truman Medical Center, our partners over at Children's Mercy Hospital as it pertains to the vaccine. Many of you know that the numbers in this area are still of concern, and just what's happening around the country with this virus is just basically debilitating. So I'm not really interested at this point in focusing on the percent of people that have contracted the virus rather than now. I want to focus more on what is it that we're going to do to get our kids back into school, knowing that the vaccines are now available or they will be available. And so what we're looking at, at this point, is to receive the vaccine as a part of Phase 1B, and that will happen, we believe, hopefully at the end of January. But everything that I'm hearing from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education is that it will probably be more so around that first or second week in February. And what we will do is work with our staff. We have two sites that we're looking at. Manual Tech and Paseo are the two considerations to do the vaccine due to ease and convenience. We want our staff to know that this will, in partnership with Truman Medical Center, they will have an opportunity to get the vaccine. We believe it will be Pfizer. I believe that's what the state has received. The Pfizer requires two shots. One, when you get it, let's say it's just the first week in February, then you would have to wait three weeks before you get the second shot. Once you get the second shot, you will then be at ninety-five percent immunity after the second dose. So what does that mean for our school district in terms of looking at bringing kids back to in-person? That means that at the earliest, we would be looking to bring our kids back during that first or second week in March. We are going to send out a communication to our parents tomorrow and to our faculty and staff. We are also sending out a survey to our faculty and staff so that we can get an idea of the percent of staff members that are going to take the vaccine. Whether we decide to take the vaccine or not, once that window closes, KCPS plans to bring students back into school. The logistics around whether it's all of our students for five days or a hybrid model, we're going to continue to work on that as we work with our medical experts, as we look at best practices around the country with districts that have already returned. And then also making sure that we do take into consideration the CDC guidelines that we have to adhere to from a social distancing standpoint. So just because people would have received the vaccine doesn't mean that now we're not, we can't, like, we're still going to have to require mask wearing. There's a lot of other things from a mitigation standpoint that the district will still have to comply with in an effort to minimize any potential spread to those who may not choose to take it or even with student-to-student transmission. So that's where we are right now in working with Truman Medical Center. And our nurses, at this point, I'm believing by the end of this week, all of our nurses who have elected to get the vaccine will be vaccinated because they are a part of Phase 1A. Phase 1B is when the educators will come in. And we believe that, as I've said before, that we think that would happen that last week in January, in between that and possibly the second week in February. So that's where we are as far as a vaccine is concerned. We still have seats available with our community partners. We have the Park and Recreation and Boys and Girls Club, and we have about fifty-five seats available for those parents who want their kids to be a part of this program that we have with these partners. Fifty-five seats are available. That will allow for some of our parents who may need to work, who may need to do some additional things to make ends meet, to give them that schedule of freedom. And this also provides before and after-school opportunities for these students while they are receiving their education during the day with these partners. So we want to make sure that our community knows that that's available and that there are some available seats. As far as our early childhood centers and our classes, we are looking to add five more sections. We believe that that will be ready to go after we get through all of the unboarding, and there's a lot of training that has to take place with those families. We believe February fifteenth or the sixteenth, we'll be ready to add those additional classes. These are teachers who have volunteered that do not have, they volunteered knowing that they have not taken the vaccine. But because of the mere fact that our early childhood centers, we've not had many incidents there, they are teachers who are also agreeing to do whatever it is that they need to do to reduce any possible spread of the virus. So we're going to add a few additional seats, and we're looking forward to that. We've sent out a survey to our parents around virtual and distance learning. We want to make sure that people know that the virtual model will be available for the remainder of this year. And to be honest with you, we believe that it will be a part of this school district moving forward for the foreseeable future. We think it's an option that's working for a number of our students and families, and we think that as a district, we need to continue to provide that. So we believe that will definitely be a part of this district moving forward. But for those who want to move their kids into the distant learning model, we've sent out that information. We want to make sure that if you want your kids to now move back into that hybrid model or into that in-person model, that that survey allowed for you to elect to do so. And so we want to make sure that we're offering that and that we have consistency for our families. So those who know that I get to keep my kid in the virtual program, that will happen. Those who are in the distant learning model and they're looking forward to their kids going back to school, that will happen. So we are looking forward to getting school back in up and running. My goal is March, and as long as we can stick within the timeline of the estimates that we're receiving, we believe that that will happen. It's also important that everybody know that the state is requiring state assessments this year. So at the end of the day, you, we're not going to be able to offer those assessments to students at home. They're going to have to be in school, and we want to get our kids back in school because we know we have a number of staff members that are ready to receive them. We have a number of students that want to come back. But as I've always said, we're going to do it with safety at the forefront of everything that we do because I don't want to be in a situation where we're having to shut the school down every other day because we're not properly practicing those mitigation efforts that need to be put in place. So I want to thank our community. I've spoken with several parents recently. I was on the phone with one two days ago who broke down, was crying because of how difficult this has been on her and her family. And I know that, I recognize that. I'm not keeping these kids out of school because I don't want them in school. And I think any type of language that's out there or any type of conversation that may be happening at the state level that the kids in KCPS are losing out on education, I have, I have a problem with that because our teachers are working hard. They're doing everything that they can, and I think they're working harder now than they, than they have when they were in person because of how difficult this virtual platform has been for us to try to keep a connection with our students. So I want to give a huge thank to our faculty and staff, our teachers, our building administrators, and our employees here at Central Office that have worked hard in a very, very difficult year to educate students differently. And I can assure you that as we move forward with bringing students back, the new CARES Act money that we're going to get, there's going to be a significant focus on our extended learning loss summer program so that we can close as many gaps as we can possibly close. We look forward to the assessments because that's going to give us additional data on what skill sets need to be filled for our students as we utilize those, that additional time during the summer to help get our kids caught back up. So I'm thankful for our community, and I thank you for your understanding and grace. And I know it's not easy for anybody, but I do see the light at the end of the tunnel, at the end of the tunnel. Next slide. So the other thing that I wanted to share with the board and the community is this draft framework for provisional school districts. And I think it's something that we haven't necessarily done enough of a good job of just articulating to our community what this district has done over the last three years when you start to look at our data. And it made me think, why is it that the school district isn't fully accredited? When I look at our data, when you think about our academic performance, our district over the last three years has an average over seventy percent. And then when you look at our graduation rates, our school district has moved from sixty-eight percent to seventy-four point eight percent. Advanced credit, we have schools that didn't even have advanced credit that now offer advanced credit courses. Those are AP courses. We have students passing with qualifying scores now. A big difference from two thousand and sixteen when we didn't have any of our kids scoring a three, four, or five on those tests. But we have hundreds of kids now taking these advanced placement courses across the school district. On our MAP assessments, we've closed gaps against the state every single year in math and reading. We've earned exceeding expectations in those areas. And then as you think about the final performance on local assessments, we make sure that we monitor. We have to give this board an update throughout the year on progress. We update them on how our kids perform on those initial assessments at the beginning of the year on IREDD. Then they do a mid-year. Then they do one at the end of the year. The district is doing interim assessments this year so that we can align everything with state standards. So we have all of the data to know exactly where our kids are and what needs to happen in order to close those gaps. The other area, and I went to the middle first because everybody wants to know academically, did the school district earn enough points? And I wanted, I can honestly say to you, our data will stand up to anybody. We're doing that well, but we have a long ways to go. But we are much better off than we were four years ago and even six to ten years ago. System reviews, they're going to focus on leadership and governance. How well does our board work together? We have a highly competent board, a board that sticks to board policy. They adhere to the strategic plan goals. And every month, we have to give a monitoring presentation, as you will see tonight. Those include key performance indicators. So at the end of the day, there is a strong accountability that we are doing what we say we're supposed to do and that we can have an accountability to this community. Leadership, I've been here five years. There's stability. We're producing superintendents out of this school district to go on and lead other school systems. We have a strong strategic plan. Our educator effect, we're no longer the school district of last resort. People are emailing us wanting to work here. I just got a resume yesterday from someone in Illinois saying, I want to come and work in your school district. I'm seeing what you guys are doing. We started this school year off with three vacancies. And in financial condition, condition, we're financially stable. We have a very strong fund balance. We every month give the community an update on how we are adhering to the approved budget. And then the other predictors that they're going to look at, preschool enrollment. Are we doing what we need to do to give more preschool options? Instructional days lost? Are our kids in a situation where they're losing on more instructional days for whatever reason? We have one of the longest school days in the state of Missouri. So even on snow days, there are days we don't have to make up, but the district makes those days up. Elementary on-track indicators. How well are our kids progressing from one grade level to the next? And then they're going to look at high school on track to graduate. They're going to look at failure rates. They're going to look at all of those different kinds of things. And these are key KPIs, key performance indicators that are used with other urban school districts and other school districts across the country. So we're waiting to hear back from DESI. We believe that they will do an intensive review of all of these indicators for our school district. And we are hopeful that at the conclusion of that review, that they will come with a recommendation that we believe would be favorable based on our body of work. I will say this to the community in closing. I'm not here to ask for handouts from anybody. Our body of work justifies why I believe this district should be fully accredited. But our body of work also justifies that even with full accreditation, we have a long way to go. Until we are performing at or above state average across the board, we cannot lower our guards. And so we will see what happens over the next couple of months as we continue to have this dialogue with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Madam Chair, that concludes this part of my presentation. And I don't know if there's any questions before we get ready to go into our board workshop.
I want to see if there's any questions or comments for my colleagues. Ms. Wolfsee?
Dr. Bedell, on this draft framework for provisional districts, because this is new, correct?
This is, this is new. Many of the things that they already were looking at is in here. I think there'll probably be more on this success predictors. That's, that's probably a little bit different from what they've used in the past.
And that's kind of what I was looking at was, it appears that some of the work that the Council of Great City Schools tends to look at as, as leading indicators is showing up now in the success predictors, I feel like so.
I think you are absolutely correct on that. You are very close to that, absolutely.
Okay, well, I'm positively, I feel that that's a good sign that DESI is starting to look at some of the things that, an entity such as the Council of Great City Schools who has kind of a very wide breadth to look at and what they've been tracking over the years. And I know how we've performed against some of our peers there. So this makes me happy to see that DESI is open to some of these new indicators, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Ms. Wolfsee. Mr. Hogan?
Thanks, Madam Chair. Dr. Bedell, thanks for the work that you and your team have put into this, not just here recently in terms of creating a compelling case to DESI, but over the last four years, right? I mean, because we wouldn't be where we are right now if you guys had not done all of the work and the blood, sweat, and tears that went into creating the systems that allowed us to start to see some success. Obviously disappointed that it's taking pressure from the district for DESI to react. Glad that they're sort of in this mode now, and hopefully we'll see some of the, some of the fruits of our labor through that accreditation. I think, you know, as we've talked about before, look, let's, let's assume that it plays out in the way that you, that you anticipate that it may. Obviously, we're going to, we're going to go do a grand tour around the city, and that'll be great, right, to celebrate? Because, and mostly frankly for, I mean, it's great for the city, but, I mean, your team, right? The commitment of you and your team over the last four years is what got us here. And look, I'm not discounting the board and the influence that the board has had prior to this board as well. But let's celebrate for this long. And we've talked about this before, right? Let's go celebrate it. Let's talk about how important it is and meaningful it is for this community. But then, and you spoke on this earlier, let's make sure then we, we continue the focus on creating the systems, putting the pressure on the system to make sure that we're, we're getting creative and innovative around how we educate our kids. And so I'm looking forward to, to hearing more in March, and we'll just kind of go from there.
Yeah, I think the state will make a recommendation to the state board. They're going to look at every district that's in the provisional accreditation range, and they're going to apply this, these indicators, and then they will make a recommendation. And hopefully, we will know by the end of February or by that first week in March where they land KCPS. To your point, Mr. Hogan, the thing that I've shared with my team is, I've only been here four years. You know, there are people who've been in this district, like a Darryl Davis for twenty-six years, who says, I don't remember the last time we were designated as a fully accredited system. Or a Dr. Kirksey, who's almost close to fifty years, if not at fifty years. There's people who've been through the good, the bad, and the ugly in this system, and they've never given up. And so for me, Mr. Hogan, if we are fortunate enough to be granted a fully accredited district, I think it really, that really has to go to those people who never, who didn't give up. Because they're, I mean, you know, it's, it's been, it's been a tough journey. But I do, I just want people to know, I just don't want us to lower our guards because we just, we have so much work to do regardless. And whether it happens or not, the thing I can say to this community, I'm proud of our work. There will be an update that will come out around what we look like against other urban school districts in this country, probably towards the end of February. That will give you a better indication of what this school district has really done in comparison to other urban school districts across the country. And I think it's something that people need to be proud of, of the hard work that's been put in by the faculty and staff members in this organization. And I thank our board because you guys supported us when we asked for money. When we said we want to do this tiered funding model, you don't get to make the kind of progress if you don't have the resources. And you guys gave us the resources. And honestly, all of these data points, we can show you from, from sixteen to now, the growth in so many areas. So I think while people are out there speaking negatively of us down in Jefferson City, I think our data and the presentation will stand up against any kind of scrutiny out here.
And yeah, and it's not just Jeff City, right? There, we have some naysayers here locally as well, so.
Yep, but we have the data to back it up. This is not lip service. So thank you, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Bedell. Just, I want to make a really quick comment. You know, I've spent nearly twenty-five years affiliated with this district. And I think what is really important for the community who was waiting for something different is that a lot of the systems work that has been put in place, it was a step-by-step process. But what is very powerful, I think for me, and I hope for others who see this, is that the groundwork was laid for sustainable change. And, and so many of the components that we have been able to put in place have enabled us to look at student data really at a granular level, to recognize longstanding inequities across our different schools and to address that, to recognize and lift up neighborhood schools and the value and the amazing work that is happening in those schools. And really to be able to make sure that students don't fall off at the end of their K-12 career, that we have a safety net there to help them get through and get them on to the next stage. So it is powerful work, and obviously, we all believe in it. And we're hoping that leadership in the state of Missouri will recognize that. So thank you for laying that out for us.
And Madam Chair, I think there's one piece that I didn't mention, and that is the work that we have done. I think this community needs to know, we've worked close with the state on a monthly basis every year that I've been here and probably even before I came. And so everything that we've done, the state knows, and they have been tracking it on a monthly basis. In fact, because we were doing so well, it was that last year was decided, we don't need to meet on a monthly basis. We see the alignment when we go into schools. We see it when you guys present it, and we also know you're presenting it to your board. So they wanted to go back to the original four quarterly meetings, and that's what we've gone to. But if they didn't have confidence in what we were doing, there's no way we would have gone back from the once a month to the four quarterly meetings. So I do want people to know that we have worked closely with DESI every year that I've been here to also get to this point.
Thank you.
All right, so I think we're ready now to move into our first presentation. Four point three, four point four, financial stability. I will pass that over to Ms. Linda Quinley, our Chief Operations and Financial Officer.
Thank you, Dr. Bedell. Good evening, Board Chair Manzer, board members, Dr. Bedell, and our guests this evening. We are here to share an annual update on board policies four point three and four point four relating to financial condition and planning and budgeting. As I began, I would be remiss if I did not thank the finance team, particularly Elaine Morgan, who has helped to gather a lot of this data that you're going to see this evening. So let's get started with four point three. This policy states that the superintendent shall not cause or allow fiscal jeopardy or material deviations that don't align to the ends in Board Goals one point O and four point O. And so we have selected some KPIs for you that we believe help measure that. There are actually sixteen in the policy, and we're going to highlight several of them. But specifically, we're going to talk about fund balance, debt management, audit results, policy and compliance, and cash management and cash position. So as we start with fund balance, I wanted to just share a reminder of what it is and how it's calculated. Basically, it's our net worth or the difference between our assets and our liabilities. So that's your mini accounting lesson to, tonight for those of you who chose to not enjoy that class in college. Generally, it's calculated and quoted by percentage. So at the end of each fiscal year, we take that net worth or fund balance, and we divide it by that year's total expenditures to get the fund balance percentage. This can be done in total, which you'll see, or it can be done by individual fund because as a school district, we, as a governmental agency, we fall under fund accounting and have multiple funds that we work inside of. So if I get my, keep my slide loose. We're going to look at two different sets of fund balance this evening. The first one listed here being overall fund balance for all of the funds in the district. So that's our operating funds, our operating capital, grants, child nutrition services, everything that you oversee as a board. You see in our five-year history and trend that our June thirtieth, twenty, overall fund balance was twenty-nine percent, which is down about three percent from this time last year. While we did put money into reserves, and we'll look at that a little later, our total expenditures increased, so therefore the fund balance percentage decreased. You see, we are right in line with our five-year average. In the bottom section, this is the operating fund. And I like to talk about it separately because this is the money that is our largest focused when we're budgeting. It's the money that we have the most control over, and it's the largest portion of our overall budget. You can see also that it mirrors the total with about twenty-eight percent ending fund balance, a decrease of thirty-two percent, again, even though we put money into that, and we'll look at why and how, with a five-year average of about thirty-three percent. The state of Missouri does not The state of Missouri does not set rules around fund balance or even expectations other than to say that they want to make sure that each district sets a budget that has a fund balance that supports their cash flow and their future needs. The only thing you're going to find in statute or reference anywhere is that 3% is deemed fiscally insolvent insolvent and will result in a state takeover. So the average fund balance as of June 30th for the state of Missouri was just over 50%. Now, it's very common in smaller districts to find really high fund balances. Our comparison peers that we use average around 35%. So you can see we're just under those peers. And those range from 7% to 49%. St. Louis sits right around 40 to 45% year in and year out. So it's really difficult to say, do we have the right fund balance or the wrong fund balance? It's about what we need. And again, we're going to look at how we got there and and sort of some position on that appropriate level. Then we seem to be heavy on the keys tonight. Then looking at our indebtedness, measuring our debt management requires we look at two KPIs. The first is our general obligation bond capacity as compared to outstanding, and that's this top section right here. So you can see a three-year trend of what is allowable under law. And I want to remind you that what capacity is or allowable. This is calculated based on your assessed valuation. It's 15% of real and personal property assessed valuation. So at December 31st of this year, based on our final assessed valuations in July, our capacity is about $560 million. As we all know, since it's been over 50 years since we've passed a geo bond in Kansas City for public schools, we have zero outstanding, so 100% of our bonding capacity is available to us. It's also been over about 30 years since the desegregation money was available to us. So then you're going to note that the capacity actually went down from last year. That is a direct result of the final numbers for assessed valuation last year based on protests and appeals. The lower half of the slide shows our operating debt that has been issued. We refer to this as operating debt because it's issued under the board's authority based on our intent to use existing operating revenues to repay the debt or new revenues should the debt instrument have created that. So we have four outstanding debt instruments that started with a collective principal balance of $113 million. And as of June 30th, was down to 87.5 million. This is a $5 million decrease in principal from last year. So we're taking a pretty good click off of our principal at this point in time. You can see the current average rates and maturities of each of these debts and our current year principal and interest expectation. Between all four of them, we're going to pay $8.3 million of principal and interest out of operating revenues. It's highly unusual to see this mix of debt with no general obligation bonds and substantial operating debt. One component of ensuring good debt management is watching for refunding or refinancing options. And as you can see here in these average rates, we've got three that would be really good candidates and another that would be a possible candidate currently based on how that debt instrument was originally written. 2010 and 2015 issues, so line two and four are eligible for refinance. You're aware of this because you recently authorized a contract with our financial advisor to help us with this refinance effort. And we're working to get that debt into the market very soon and bring that final acceptance to you in February based on the fact that mark the interest rates are good for us right now. We do expect that between those two issues, as we refinance them, we should save roughly $3 million in interest over the remaining life of this debt. And you can see that's nine years and 10 years. So about $300,000 a year that will be going back into the operating budget as we refinance this debt. So our next slide is talks a little bit about credit rating. We don't have a current credit rating because you only get a credit rating when you're actually issuing debt. So our most recent rating comes from that July 2016 issue and was A+ or stable, which is one step improvement from the previous issue in November of 2010, as you see there. What that rating means is that we have good capacity to repay our debt. However, we are slightly susceptible to adverse economic conditions such as assessed valuation or downturns in the economy. So what influences bond rating that we keep an eye on in particular? We won't have a new bond rating until we issue new debt. So it's likely that we will have a rating call as we do this refinance. And the items that they're going to look at are going to be fund balance and trend. We looked at that. That is likely going to be incredibly strong point for us because we sit sort of right in the middle, but healthily. Enrollment and enrollment trends, accreditation status, current debt that's on the books, which we're fine on, and pension liability and local economy such as assessed valuation. That pension pension liability became a big thing for raiders about, gosh, I can't remember how long I've been doing this, maybe six years ago, when Gatsby decided that we should carry on our books the entire debt for the pension obligation for employees who work with us today. And so on paper, we start to see over time that that liability grows because we have more employees coming through the system. It is something that raiders look at, but is not something that we would be incredibly concerned about. So key performance indicators relating to federal and state program compliance. This is measured during our annual external audits, which you just received in December. You can see that we, over the last five years, we've only had five compliance findings, all of which were minor. And in the last two years, we've had zero findings. This is evidence that our procedures and our practices align with state and federal expectations relating to financial and operational stewardship and the compliance requirements that come with those large federal grant dollars in particular. My apologies for being a bad driver. So cash and investment balances are basically our liquidity. DESI, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, annually requests that all the school districts share our fund balances and our cash balances. As that can be considered a low point in cash in the year because schools work and work and work until January, when they get the majority of their revenues for the most part. That low point can and commonly is November because as the collector's office issues bills in September or October, there are a lot of people who go ahead and pay their property taxes in November and December. So therefore, the December fund balance tends to be a little higher. But you can see here, cash and investments balances for all funds. So again, some of these are restricted or committed for use such as child nutrition services or capital. But you see that we had an increase this December 31st from previous year and it's higher than we have had. That's a little bit subject to the fact that we've had reduced larger contracts such as transportation and substitute teacher contracts, as well as we've been able to replenish some extra costs with CARES Act monies. But you can see that we are solid and steady mid-year and that the state would have no reason to be worried about our mid-year mark. The S R 2 funds that Dr. Bedell mentioned that have just been announced, there will be $871 million for Missouri. That is four times the amount of S R 1 last spring. However, we're waiting for the actual allocations and the rules for those and how they can be used. We do know that they'll be available to us for use next fiscal and perhaps this spring, probably this spring, I would say around March. And we'll use this to stabilize needs for next year's budget as the extra costs are incurred relating to intervention for students that Dr. Bedell shared and continued COVID-related expenses as we start our return to normal school again. So how do we achieve fiscal integrity and work to assure the same? It's basically good process and procedure with assured separation of duties. That's really the key to the effort. And we specifically use the tools we have listed here to make that assurance. Number one is our administrative policies that are drafted by MSBA and used commonly across the state of Missouri. We have a very robust contract review and approval process. We utilize our financial software, you hear it referred to as Alio commonly, and the security system built within it to guard against individuals having any authority to enter, approve, pay for any kind of expenditure without someone else being in that process. So we set up hierarchies and security roles. Council Great City Schools noted this on their audit about five years ago, shortly after Dr. Bedell came and asked them to perform that audit. And based on our separate duties between technology services and their role in managing the backend software and business and finance who oversee that actual appropriate process review, we're able to assure really good system controls and securities here at KCPS. And we continue always to use external experts, including our auditors and others, to review, report and advise as we have the opportunity to do so. We have a couple of those engagements going right now, in fact. So other tools and methods of assuring fiscal integrity and strength include what you see here. The state of Missouri has appropriately restrictive parameters regarding investment of funds to assure that the citizenry that funds in our care are safely invested. We are not out in the real estate markets. We're not doing anything like that. We are pretty tightly held to treasuries and those kinds of things for our investment. Reduces a lower yield, but is incredibly safe. We work to be engaged with local and state, national economy and policy activity so that we can adjust as we go and so that we can plan accordingly. And we manage our reserves to be adequate considering long-term effects of our current decisions, both on reserves and on those credit ratings. Are there questions?
Thank you, Ms. Quinley. I want to open it up to my colleagues for questions. Ms. Cortez?
So really, you know, I I think as you look at the, Ms. Quinley, thank you for the the walkthrough of the key performance indicators. I think that's very helpful in helping us kind of understand the fund balance trends. In your view, is that 28% at fiscal year end, 630, 20, likely an anomaly in relative? I mean, are you anticipating that that percentage of fund balance will kind of come back up in the into the 30 range at the end of this fiscal year?
That's a great question. We're going to look a little more about at that in the next section. But let me go ahead and give you a response to that. So again, there's no set in stone rule. What we don't want to do is we want to make sure that we're always budgeting and planning, which is our next session, to put our resources into classrooms and activities and supports for students. That's that's our goal. So it's not our goal to increase balances. But as our expenditures go up, then that fund fund balance dollar should go up if we're trying to target around this percentage. We're comfortable at 28%. It allows us to cash flow appropriately. This year, and again, you'll see this a little bit in the next slide, we're not sure how this year is going to land out because we do have some savings in certain categories like transportation and substitutes and overtime and utilities. However, we have some higher costs, as you well know, related to COVID expenditures and some things like that. I am very comfortable and hopeful that we stay in that, I would say, 26 to 30% range. 30 is definitely on the high end. I don't think we have any reason to think that that's in jeopardy right now based on what we're seeing.
Thank you. I appreciate that. It's, you know, there are multiple factors that go into that.
Right.
And agree that we want to be maximizing what we put in the classroom.
Ms. Quinley, I have a kind of a question and and it was it's somewhat related to the question Ms. Cortez asked. So, you know, part of, and I I mean, it is then in essence somewhat of an anomaly because we've had COVID. You know, it's a pandemic, which we haven't seen since 1918 at any kind of scale. So but you know, early in the year when we were budgeting, you know, none of us had the sense of how long this pandemic would last. And seems the effects are going to continue well, well, well into 2021. Whereas we all hope we would be done before Thanksgiving last last year and that hasn't happened. So, you know, when you talk about on the fiscal strength, you know, the awareness and adaptation to community economic factors and state, federal education policy and funding. How, what kinds of, you know, how are you looking out ahead in terms of local conditions and even like assessed valuation, property taxes? We have a lot of taxes paid under, we have a lot of people who protest seemingly relatively successfully. Kind of how do you look across that landscape and try to forecast based on ongoing economic uncertainty, a pandemic that has not yet gotten under control? And we do see reduced economic activity locally, so.
That's a great, great question also. And part of what Ms. Jax is going to share with you, we'll shed some light on that as well. And then our next session on 4.4, planning and budgeting, I'll go a little deeper. But paying attention to what's happening is pretty key. Budgeting and planning is only as good as the assumptions you make based on the data you have at the time you make them. And so we do stay closely engaged with both our local assessor and what's going on, state economists and the state activity. As far as planning assessed valuation, that is a tricky one. It is very difficult to do because particularly here, I have found based on my experience elsewhere, normally you see a fairly reliable trend in assessment year and non reassessment years. In reassessment years and non reassessment years. And you're able to sort of, I like to track the last 10 years and then I have five years of reassessment year and five years of non reassessment year. And I can kind of really get good at estimating. But honestly, to be honest, in Jackson County, that has been a volatile number. It's either been a silent number or a volatile number over recent years. And so we had harsh declines because of the fact we're not under the Hancock Amendment. Then we had flatlined for many, many, many years. And then we had harsh increases again because we're not under Hancock. And so it makes that projection incredibly more difficult. So the best that we can do is look at our trend data, but stay closely engaged with those who are doing the work. And then we'll talk a little more about the impact of protests when we get into that next section.
Right. Ms. Wolfsey, did you have a question?
Yeah, it's not related to us. So if you want to answer this later, Ms. Quinley, that's fine. But I'm curious, do we know, I know we are average fund balance, but are charters, do would they keep similar fund balances? Do they publish that? I'm just curious.
We do know because as you know, one of the things that we've been doing the last several year is creating the data set that allows us to compare ourselves and our charters to other systems. And so we know exactly the ending fund balances. They all report those just like we do on their annual secretary of the board report. That isn't really a report of the secretary of the board, so don't feel like you guys have missed something. It's really something the finance team puts together, but it's our annual financial report. They complete the very same one. Now, what you will see typically with charters is that they carry relatively low fund balances. And that, in our case, in Kansas City and St. Louis, the only charter counties in Missouri, that's because the statute is written to where they are getting 1/12 of their annual local revenues each month. Whereas we're waiting for that big hump of revenue to come in January and February. So they don't need as much cash to get through the year, much as much starting cash as we do because they they get a more even share of those revenues.
Which I think I knew and part of the challenge for them, if some of the equity funding changes and the rules that we live under, they have to live under, will cause them some challenges from a fund balance perspective. As in, if they have to wait as long as we do, if I'm understanding that correctly, they may need to build up a balance, especially since, did you say 3% is the trigger amount?
Correct.
Okay.
And you're exactly spot on with that. And so I know that they are having those conversations. They either need to be building fund balance, which may be difficult to do during COVID times, or they have to be ready, should legislation change, to enter into what's called tax anticipation notes or TANs.
Yeah.
You can go to a local bank pretty readily as a school and say, look, here's, you know, here's the assessed value. You can go to a local bank pretty readily as a school and say, look, here's, you know, here's the assessed valuation. Here's what we should be getting in January. And you can borrow relatively cheaply against those monies if your fund balances won't support you through. So charters will have those two options, either build their balances or use TANs to get to the end goal of January.
And if you drop below 3%, it just triggers the potential for takeover. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And are there any other questions before we proceed? Okay, Ms. Quinley, go ahead.
Okay. So 4.4 is our second policy that we're looking at tonight. And this is about planning and budgeting. So it's assuring that our budgeting and planning processes do not deviate materially again from the ends or risk financial jeopardy. So what we see here, this is where we're going to take a look at our trend on revenues over expenditures or under expenditures at year end, showing how we're coming in at year end, basically. So again, you have a five-year history and this is all funds. So this includes child nutrition services, grants, the capital, and the regular operating funds. You'll see we have a fairly consistent trend in these last three years of a little over 3.5%, but under 4% of our total expenditures going into reserves, can be substantial dollars, roughly the $9 million mark. Again, this is all funds. And you see that in total, our expenditures have remained relatively the same over this last time period. While we'd like to get this to where it's about 1% because we do have adequate reserves, that requires really a little more consistency in a year. Last year was certainly an anomaly. The last half of the year had some significant change. But we want to work to be a little closer to 1% as our budget grows. And so that will be a target that we set for ourselves. But you can see we're in good, safe, stable condition. Again, we aren't looking to put money into reserves. So we want to make sure that we are maximizing our budget. On this slide, we're looking at the annual operating budget, which is incidental and teacher. And just as a reminder, teachers fund by statute. We can only pay from that for the salaries and benefits of certified staff in certified roles and tuition that we pay to other districts who may be supporting our kids but have been placed there for some reason. The incidental fund is really regular operations. It's everything about running the school business and paying the salaries and benefits of our non-certified staff. You see similar trend here in the last couple of years and similar dollars overall. Note this asterisk right here on 1920, again, as we have realigned to the new DESI account code structure. In 1920, we added those federal grant dollars into the operating fund because we do live on them, right? The title money and the special education IDEA dollars, those are ongoing monies that support the regular budget. So therefore you also see this increase in expenditures. It's not that the operating budget went up that much, but that we transferred some monies from what would have previously been in the grant fund. So again, we were able to save many millions last year on operating costs that have boosted this balance. And as we head into the next couple of years, which will be a little less predictable, it's probably a positive. It is not our end-all goal to continue that kind of money going into reserves at year end. So on this slide, we're looking at our cash flow and our position in cash flow, again, a little differently at December 31st. In this column right here, what this is showing you is the, you can't see my cursor, can't you, as I keep saying this good? I hope I'm not pointing to something you can't see. Right here, you're seeing what percentage of our revenue for this year's budget or in previous years, the actual, we've received as of this point and what percentage of expenditures we're at. So we're trailing a little behind on expenditures, again, because our transportation costs are down and some things like that. We're trailing ahead on revenues partially because of CARES Act money coming in. We are a little unusual out here in the final column in that we have collected more revenues than expenditures this year. That is not typical for us. So as Ms. Cortez was the first to note, this year is a bit of an anomaly in that regard, but we're particularly seeing it in the cash flow lines. So we wanted to share with you a look at the key revenue line, which is all about current property taxes for us as the majority of our total budget. You can see that at this point last year, 1920, we'd collected just over $80 million or 51 and 1/2% of our budgeted property tax revenues. And this year, we're at 41.39% at only $68 million. Part of that has to do with how many Fridays, we get our payments on Fridays? How many Fridays there were in this month of January prior to putting this together? So we may be behind a Friday, but also part of it has to do with timing of when people pay. It's important to note that this year, we budgeted for an increase over last year, as you can see right here, due to the fact that in 2019, there were a large number of outstanding tax bills that were not paid. As Ms. Manzer mentioned, there were appeals, there were protests locally and appeals that went all the way to the state tax commission. So we knew that there was a significant amount of revenue that we would collect some portion of, probably a major portion of, that did not happen last year, but should occur this year. And then the 2020 payment happened also. So many taxpayers we would, should receive two payments from. As an example, the Plaza is at nearly $4 million in annual property taxes. And their 2019 appeal is set to be heard on February 17th. So we expect to receive those taxes for both 2019 and 2020, sometime shortly after that February 17th appeal hearing, should it be resolved at this point. So while districts can elect to receive appeal payments before resolved, if we do so and the resolution goes in favor of the property owner, we have to make that payment back to the county. So since we do have adequate cash position, we're able to not need to make that election and have payments moving back and forth between us and the county or settle-ups, other districts who struggle with cash flow, go ahead and ask to receive that money, knowing they may have to pay some portion back. As we did last year, we'll provide you along the way with weekly updates of our collections compared to last year and compared to the current budget so that you're well aware. And then with the recently established finance committee, this is going to be a key topic throughout this budget planning season that we're just getting ready to undertake. So another key line this year is looking at the budget in general and the CARES Act funds. Originally, as you know, we asked the board to approve an operating budget with a $1.6 million expenditures over revenue or spend into reserve. We did this with confidence because we had needs we wanted to meet for our students, but we knew that our current fund balance levels were adequate and we were very comfortable that a $1.6 million deficit spend annually would not be a problem for our overall fund balance. Then we came to you in August after we had time to accumulate the things we were going to need to respond to COVID and ask for $5.2 million, which you also graciously granted. So that currently, we're budgeted to have 6.8 million of net expenditures over revenue in this fiscal year. When that request was made in August, we knew there were CARES Act dollars coming. And we are working to try to recover as much of that 5.2 million by using the CARES Act dollars to replace the costs of those COVID-related expenses we ask you to pre-fund. To date, you can see that between the CARES Act allocation, Jackson County's CARES Act, and just other local donors who have been wonderful to us, we have allocated additional 4.4 million of revenue to offset the 6.8 million that we ask you to spend into reserves. And so how do we focus on the ends in planning and budgeting to meet that assurance policy? The key item is really gathering, analyzing, and evaluating data and financial trend. You can see here a few of those items that we gather. We work collectively with school leadership and with our data department to overlay student achievement data and enrollment data as we allocate budgets using this tiered system that you've now become very familiar with. As I mentioned earlier, Ms. Wolfsey, we have comparison data for ourselves and other districts and we use that to help plan and determine where we have room to consider, should we make changes or adjustments. This time of the year, it's most appropriate to project our actual revenues and expenditures because again, as I mentioned, budgeting is only as good as the assumptions you make at the time you make a budget, which honestly is, we're making a lot of those assumptions in March. And it's January already, so it's nearly a year old, but we're only halfway through the year. So best practice is to work hard to project this year's actual revenues and expenditures as closely as you can so that we use that projected actual as our springboard for a new budget versus using the current budget as a springboard for the new budget. And so that's one way that we really assure that we are planning with integrity and that we're using the best possible data. Finally, we will be watching the local, state, and federal policy and economic data because they are a significant driver of the funding streams for public schools. And so specifically for us, what's happening at the state of Missouri will be a big piece of interest for us. And then as we looked at before, what are some of the tools and ways that we measure to assure fiscal strength and integrity in our budget process? So compliance with best practice and policy is always an assured way of protecting us both internally and externally. So we do welcome review. We welcome study of who's doing what better externally. We will gather and analyze that financial data, aligning it, as we mentioned earlier. We'll work to be transparent and inclusive and again, look forward to working with the finance committee on our budget development this year. Each year, it's critical that we keep highly involved and aware of actions in Jefferson City from now through May, which pushes a budget line when decisions are made in May that could be effective August 28th of the following year. But it's a huge component for us as we are trying to plan a solid budget. So we'll work to use a five-year model that allows us to determine and project fund balance long-term so that as Dr. Bedell brings you a budget recommendation in the spring, we are assured that the fiscal strength is not just for the coming year, but for many years thereafter. And collectively, these efforts are going to make sure that we're able to direct resources to students. Questions?
Thank you, Ms. Quinley. I really appreciate this presentation. Ms. Cortez, do you have a question?
I'll go last. Somebody else?
Okay, Ms. Wolfsey?
I was just going to make the comment, I'm starting to really appreciate the Hancock amendment and understand why, you know, just the whole ups and downs that we go through versus our other school, you know, every other school district but us. And so I know that's what you're probably referencing when you talk about Jefferson City, but how important that is. And you know, it's important that we made it one of our legislative priorities. So anyway, just a comment.
I have a question. I was just looking to see if anyone else had their hand raised. So when I go back and look at the fiscal year-to-date collections of current property tax revenue, et cetera. So one of my questions comes back to, again, the property tax assessment. Do we study and examine which ones, say, on the commercial property owners? Are there property owners who are consistently, I mean, some of the largest who owe funds? Is there a top five or a top 10 list who we might see over a five-plus-year period continuously rise to the top, both in terms of appeals and protests? And maybe from our perspective, under, you know, securing a generous appeal. I'm just trying to understand. I know that, you know, it is, I've served on the board since 2014 and I've been hearing about the Country Club Plaza's appeals since that time. And so I'm just, I'm sure it's not just the Plaza, but do you track who those kind of entities are?
We have that data set. I get that report every year from the county. I can't quote anyone besides the Plaza off the top of my head to you, but we do have that data set and could accumulate it for historical comparison. I can tell you that typically you're going to see AT&amp;T, who has a lot of, you know, technology-related properties on there. You will see some of the larger commercial properties fairly regularly. But truthfully, prior to the last couple of years in Jackson County, because we were flat with reassessment for so long, we had really low appeals. And so last year was the first time that we really had a high number of appeals because it was the first time that reassessment had really resulted in an increase in many, many years.
So based on what you said, would you anticipate then, because that was an extremely high year? And I know the county is investing in kind of a new systems or tools that they're going to implement for doing assessments going forward. Would you anticipate we would see? I mean, can you anticipate or predict that we would see fewer protests or fewer, you know, fewer appeals?
You know, I would be hesitant to predict that at this point. I think that we have to expect that in the next reassessment of 2021, we will again see a large number of appeals because it's sort of like a, I always think back to a very short time I spent on a city council and we had not raised the water rates for 15 years. So we were losing money on water, losing money on water, and we said, you know, we've got to fix that. So that was this giant jump. So your first leap, if you've been under market and you're brought toward market, probably was not whole. So potentially there would be some properties that would have a second large increase. And I would expect a similar number of appeals, but hopefully less depending upon the new approach and strategy that the county assessor works on. I am scheduled to meet with them and appreciate that they're always willing to talk with us about what that process is going to be and what we should expect and when we should expect it. So we'll keep you apprised of those conversations as they occur.
Great. Mr. Wosterstrom has a question. Go ahead.
Patty, I think you're asking the wrong question. What Crosby Kemper in the Kansas City Star yelled about right after the Country Club Plaza changed ownership a few years ago had nothing to do with the tax appeal. When you have true political power, you cut a deal so that you don't need to appeal. The county voluntarily reduced the initial appraisal by 75% based on a request by the Plaza without requiring any appeal. So the question is how the assessments used to be made. Now, under Gail McCann Beatty, one of the things that set off the firestorm was that she simply wanted to follow the law and appraise everything at fair market value. That upset the political apple cart. So, you know, it's not a question of whether the appeal process works or doesn't work. It's how the appraisals get set initially. And we just have to hope that Gail McCann Beatty remains strong in her resolve to make sure that the appraisal process follows the statutes.
Thank you, Mr. Wosterstrom. Ms. Cortez, I think you had a question?
Yes, and I'll just, I mean, I'll comment on your question just to say, I think a lack of appeals is not an indication of financial, of appropriate assessments because it's often, that's the time when commercial property owners just close, just stay quiet. So what you're aiming for is a balance. There's data out in the marketplace about kind of what's an appropriate level of appeals that tells you that you're putting enough, you're getting close enough to market values that people will push back. And then, you know, this year's going to be a weird year because of COVID. I mean, the same effects that we're feeling in the educational space, you're seeing a lot of stress in the real estate markets, both up and down. It's kind of strange. So this is going to be a weird year for assessments, for valuations, and for appeals. So my question, Ms. Quinley, is you- So my, my question, Ms. Quinley, is you, as you were talking about the initial budget that went into reserves and then the additional spending that the board authorized to prepare for, you know, this very unusual environment and year for, for K-12 education. How does, do those numbers reflect the report we got on child nutrition services last month as well? Or does that increase the amount that we're still seeking to catch up, so to speak?
So in that first picture where we're looking at all funds, it's collectively in there because they are separate from the operating budget. So that 6.8 does not include the child nutrition services because they reside in a separate fund. We can definitely get you an update on that. I think that would be good for us to do separately as we're getting a little further into the year. We know that recently, the legislature allowed for a 55% bump in certain child nutrition service revenue lines. And that's going to be fairly significant for us. But we should check in on how that's looking and give you an update on that very soon. So great question.
Thank you.
Adam Tier, I don't know if there are any other additional questions from the board. I did want to make a closing remark on this presentation.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I don't know who, how many people are logging in or will see the, see this on, on our recording. But there are a number of folks in this community or folks who even live on the Kansas side. As Ms. Quinley talked about, some of the other funds that we've been able to receive that has allowed for us to try to help recover with our fund balance. There are people just donating money to this school district. There are people doing it anonymously. I know we had a married couple who said they did not want any fanfare around it, a $50,000 check, just to help us with whatever we need help with. And I think that, that, that means a lot. That means a lot to me as superintendent to know that people are tuned in and they, they recognize what's happening and, and they want to make sure that the school district doesn't take a negative hit at the end. You know, I know, talking to many of my peers around the country, this budget situation is going to be in shambles, you know, for districts. And I think the CARES Act will help us significantly. But I also know that that's pretty much money that we may have up until the end of December to spend. So it's a one-time spend. I think there are longer-term impacts that are going to hurt school districts because of tax collection or the lack thereof. But I'm thankful that people are just stepping up to help us just out of the blue. And I want those people to know that we recognize you in that. Trust me, as we will have an accountability for which you send to us in how our kids perform socially, emotionally, and academically.
Mr. Barca?
Yeah, first, can, can I ask Linda to turn off the share so that we can see the bigger pictures? Please. I guess what I want to say, and it's kind of inspired by what Dr. Vadel was just talking about, is, is a little bit along the lines of this property tax stuff. You know, I don't think any of us like the reality of the aggressive way that we fund school districts. And the reality is, this is the way that we fund them, though. And for a long time, there've been a lot of elected officials, unfortunately, who have failed to do their jobs to ensure that the property tax has been maintained at the level that it should have been. And so now, unfortunately, we have to play catch-up and we are where we are. I think it's important, and I want to acknowledge both Dr. Vadel, Ms. Quinley, her entire team for getting through this challenging year. It has not been fun, but this is also something that the burden of these challenges don't rest on the school district. It is our job to make sure that we spend these dollars the best way we can for, for the kids and our staff and students. And so I just want to make sure that folks understand that if you have some concerns around property taxes, you need to take that up with the county. And we need to make sure that we're all registered to vote, because that is a bigger challenge, too, is when our communities, both black and brown, are not registered to vote. We cannot effectively convey our concerns in a way that is meaningful. So just wanted to throw that out there.
Thank you. And thank you, Dr. Vadel, for the comment about our generous Kansas City. It was incredibly heartwarming as we came to the end of the year. And there is an incredible generous population out here in the bi-state metro area, not just on our side of the state line, but on Kansas side of the state line, and we are grateful for it. So, thank you. I think we're ready for the next presentation.
All right. So at the next presentation, we'll be on 4.4, financial planning and budgeting. And if we can get the slides back up, I think we're ready. We will pass over, pass this over to Shannon Zacks, who will focus on 4.10 repurposing. So Shannon, show is yours.
Thank you, Dr. Vadel. I'm going to give two monitoring reports. The first, as Dr. Vadel mentioned, is on repurposing, and the second is on tax incentives. And so when we look, let's see if I can...
I don't have control. Can we give?
Well, it says I do. I'm trying. Okay, we'll see which of the things I just did made it move and we'll see if I can get it together the next time. So the, the repurposing policy was originally established with, after rightsizing. And really looking at our surplus school sites. We're also going to profile our mothballed school sites in this, in this report. Because that obviously also has an impact. So starting out with just kind of where we are with our surplus sites. We've had 31 at some point in time since 2011 identified as surplus. This gives a summary of the status of those sites. You notice it doesn't add up to 31 because a couple have been moved over to mothballed status. I am pleased that of that 31, we have six remaining in our inventory. Four of them with buildings and two that are land-only. There we go. Okay. So with our mothballed sites, that, that is larger. So during rightsizing, I think six were identified for mothballed status. And we've added a few over time. It's through additional closures and movement from the surplus list to the mothballed list. So a couple of those are held as mothballed status because they're, they're buildings that were closed that are adjacent to open schools. And then others were identified strategically, either in an area of the community where we saw opportunity for potential enrollment growth and the opportunity to open a school up again. I do have a note on here that several of these sites have been identified as candidates for demolition. To date, we have demolished six sites. I'm going to cost it just under $2 million. For the sites that have been identified as candidates, those estimated costs for all of them are just under $2 million as well. And we'll, we'll talk a little bit more about this at the, the end of the presentation. So when we look at how do we evaluate how we're doing and abiding by board policy? So a couple of things that we're asked to balance. The value of the site, future marketability, balancing that with public safety issues, and then also making sure that we can accommodate future enrollment growth. So a couple of things I want to highlight on this slide are, with the surplus sites, I've listed how long some of those sites have been vacant. And so the four that we have still declared surplus have been over 10 years. So they are our most challenging sites, either from a combination of layout, from location where there's not a lot of development activity, or being kind of hidden back in a neighborhood where your, your opportunities and different options for, for development are limited. But then also now, 10 years later, you know, we have experience in vandalism. We don't have systems all up and running. So something that, that we have to look at for going forward. This is also an issue with our mothballed sites. Although we have, have fewer that have been vacant for, for up to 10 years. But when those sites were originally declared mothballed, I think the idea was to get them back online sooner. But we haven't seen those enrollment movement to justify doing that. But then, as you'll remember in Master Plan, we also had closed a couple of additional ones in identifying them for mothballed status. So these are things that, that we're trying to balance as we go through. Another piece is the impact of holding on to the surplus sites on our, on our budget. And so we've, we've successfully been declining our holding costs on those surplus sites. So you can see where we are, just about a little under $65,000 for last fiscal year. Our costs for holding the mothballed sites are obviously higher. Those are buildings that you want to be able to reopen, use as a school. So you have a higher level of utility and, and maintenance going on there. Also, those have, there's, there's more of them, and some of those buildings have been in, in better condition. One thing that we are making a change to is historically, we have not coded repair and security costs by site. We estimate about $50,000 in costs for all the closed sites in school year 20. But starting this, this school year, we're coding those costs by site. So we'll be able to, to lay that out more specifically between the surplus and the mothballed sites going forward. So a couple takeaways. With those surplus sites that have been in the vacant status for more than 10 years, you know, we need to address that. You know, we have been experiencing some additional vandalism in the last year. We'll attribute some of that to COVID. It feels similar to what we had during the last recession. We had kind of a spurt of vandalism. As the economy got better, we saw less of that happening. We've kind of been hit again with that. So our security and facilities teams have really been, been working to, you know, keep that at bay and to address it as, as best we possibly can. At this point, we do not see that our enrollment trends, as well as the capital funding needed to bring those mothballed sites back and to use... They don't necessitate the full current inventory of mothballed sites that we have. And so that's something that we need to work on. And then always, you know, trying to balance that holding cost and preserving the value and potentially either reuse by the district or, or redevelopment potential for, for buildings, keeping them in good condition. So some next steps. As part of Blueprint 2030, one of the, the goals of that is to take a relook at that school, school, oh la la la, sorry, closed school inventory and to bring recommendations back to you. Because of, we had the delay with Blueprint 2030's schedule with COVID. Our goal is to bring those, that, those recommendations to you before the full Blueprint 2030 process is done. Also need to be evaluating some alternative disposition strategies for those remaining surplus sites. Re-engaging the neighborhoods and community partners in that process. And then allocating some funds this year to proceed with demolition on several of those candidates for demolition. Again, as we do that, including the, the community in that process. But that's what we see as the next steps. And this concludes what, what I have to present on the repurposing 4.10. So I'm happy to take any questions now before we move into the tax incentives monitoring report.
Hey, any questions? So wave at me. Mr. Barca, is that you? All right.
I have questions. So I guess I, I want to follow up. I'm, I'm excited to see that some of these next steps are here, especially when it comes to re-engaging neighborhoods and community partners. I, I wanted to ask a question that pertains to the previous sites and try and identify what we've done in some of those areas. Because obviously, you know, probably my, my experiences. There have been promises made by the district and administrative past that still have not been fulfilled on several different sites. And so I want to make sure that before we get to the next phase, that those things are closed out. So how much is left in those areas?
So with Thatcher, we do have the memorial that still needs to be constructed. Linda, I know we talked about an update, and I'm sorry if you have a, I, I know that this is one that we are targeting for having complete before the end of this fiscal year, but I'm not sure the exact specific timing for it.
Yeah, happy to share that. We have bounced this back and forth as we struggled to get bids for it. And then we got bids that were four and five times the original estimate. And so finally, in our current year's exterior, building exterior contract, we have included that and they're getting ready to get underway on it. We worked on getting our exterior envelope work on that contract first. But that should definitely be up and in place this spring, summer for the community using that original. There were some original components, Shannon, you'll remember that better there, what, what we're supposed to be a part of that. But yes, that one has been long and delayed, but it's getting ready to get started and should be complete this fiscal year.
And I think there was some, there's some other material, right, that we kept from different sites that had community intent. I think Greenwood would be another one that I was thinking off the top of my head and several other sites. I, I just want to make sure that there's the full community healing side before we go back and try and engage in some of these areas. Because I imagine, I know the preservationists are going to come out for sure. But I imagine there's going to be some hurt community folks who are also going to come back and say, well, you said this. And I just want to make sure that that healing is truly done.
So we are holding on to materials for McCoy. Those have been housed waiting for Parks Department and the neighborhood to integrate those into the next phase. And right before winter break, we were in communication with Parks Department staff. I do believe they went and checked on what was left to see how that can be integrated into the, the designs of the next phase of the park. So we've just kind of been holding that because they didn't have a place to do it. So those, and waiting for that next phase. So, so that will be ready to go when, when they have that phase funded at the Parks Department. I am not aware of any material that we are holding for Greenwood. So those are, those are the items that I'm aware of and I, I feel good about where we're at in, in fulfilling those. Obviously, as we have the memorial under construction and ready to go, we'll be reaching back out to the neighborhood to, you know, decide what kind of event can, can we have to commemorate that.
No, I was involved in the Greenwood one. That's, I believe, I was here for that. And I, I don't remember us talking about preserving anything. I did, I do remember a conversation about some type of beautification project or something. But I, you know, that was in conjunction with the community. I don't, Shannon, at this point, I think I'd asked you that a while ago, like where, have we heard, have we heard anything back from those folks on that particular piece?
So we have a proposal that we've received. In fact, I was just talking with our broker about our next steps today. And so we've been talking with the Center for Neighborhoods for, for a little bit during COVID about getting that meeting scheduled. Because there is desire for community use to be a, a part of that redevelopment. We, we have to have a viable redevelopment first that the community is supportive of before we can incorporate a community element to it. But, but that's in process. So thank you that, we didn't preserve materials, but, but that is something that, that we will continue to be working with and aim to get on.
And then I want to go to Mr. Wosterstrom and, oh, and then Dr. Jones, I see. Okay. Go ahead, Mark.
Yeah. Of the 10 mothballed sites, one of the sites is Southwest High School out at 65th and Warno Road. Based on information that the school district gave me a few months ago when I asked, the carrying cost current... when I asked, the carrying cost currently for Southwest is something less than half of the total carrying cost for all ten mothballed buildings. Could you give me a more nuanced response of why Southwest is being mothballed? What is it that you foresee in the future that the district will be using Southwest for?
So when Southwest was closed during the master planning process in two thousand and sixteen, it was identified as a potential future third middle school site. And so during the Blueprint 2030 process, that will be one of the, you know, future potential options that we will be looking at. As we look at, what does the district look like over the next ten years? So that's part of our assessment.
Let's see, Dr. Jones, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Yes, this is really quick. Can you, thank you, Ms. Jax for this update. I always appreciate these updates on the status of these buildings because, you know, we all drive by these buildings and people in the community make comments about, you know, we have all these needs for nonprofits or shelters or what have you, and the district just has these buildings sitting, you know. So I'm glad for, I'm thankful for this type of presentation. But can you remind me if there's somewhere on the website that community members can go and see what the status of these are? Because I kind of feel like if people, if we could point people to, you know, a place where they can see, this is the status of these buildings. It might look like this outside, and you might think you can do this with it, but this is the actual status, and this is why it's just, you know, kind of sitting there. Do you feel like that's already, this is already accessible to people? Or is that something you all plan to develop?
No, no, thank you for that question. I should do a better job at pitching that information that we have available. It's one of the things that when we started the repurposing process, we got a lot of kudos nationally because we were more transparent than other districts in providing information to the community. So we do have a dedicated website, kacypublicschools.org/repurposing. And on it, you, people can find about the process. If you are interested in purchasing and leasing a site, what that process looks like, what information we ask for. But then each of the surplus sites are listed on it. We do not have all the mothballed sites listed. That is something that we do occasionally get calls about those for their status. So that is certainly something that we could look to add those to it because sometimes people do look for that information. Typically, they call me and then we have a conversation. And then we try to direct them to one of the surplus sites that are available. But thank you, and we can look at adding those sites to it.
Other questions from the board? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Jax. I think you've got the next one.
Okay. I feel like this is one that we talk about a lot, four point eleven tax incentives. So really looking at the impact of tax incentives. And a lot of this is focused on giving us and staff direction on how we should be evaluating proposals that are seeking incentives. I want to give a little bit of context, some of this that you have seen, but for the community at large. When we look at nationally, the impact of tax incentives on KCPS, the last time that a national review was done of all school districts that provided data, so fifty-six hundred of them, we were ranked seventeenth, seventeenth highest as far as the level of abated property tax revenues. This is not one where you want to be in the top twenty. This is one where you want to be much lower down the list. We're hoping good jobs first. We'll do another update of this later this year or next year. So we'll see where we're at more recently. But since that time, our abatement levels have gone up. We recently received that for two thousand and twenty. Our abated revenues are up to thirty-eight million dollars now. And that's just for the school district, Kansas City District number thirty-three. So if you look at that part of your property tax, that's where it aligns. It does not include anything that is, it is abated from the, is it, M and M is manufacturing and materials. I should know what M and M Replacement Fund stands for. But we are also impacted by that line item. Yes, thank you.
That stands for merchants and manufacturers. It's the terms on their manufacturing.
I got half of it.
Was Dr. Padell going to share that? Now I cut you off?
No, I couldn't remember merchants. I was about to say something else that would have embarrassed all of us, so.
Okay, well, there you have it.
But if we added that in, we would be over forty million. But just to compare apples to apples, historically, we've been looking just at that school district line, and that's increased to thirty-eight million. When we compare that thirty-eight million dollar number to how much we collect in local property tax revenues between KCPS and the charter schools, it adds up to about twenty-four percent of the current revenues collected. And this is significantly higher than what best practice recommends of being no more than ten percent. So we are really out of whack. And a lot of this are some of the long-term historical abatements that have been granted over time. So one of the things that's outlined in the policy is to really look at the impact of incentives on being able to sustain economic growth. One of the ways that we have, oh, this is.
Did it freeze on you? Oh.
No, we had one of, we had some updated graphics because we had some blurry, but one of them didn't get updated. So I'll make a correction to this slide. So when we look at building needs deferred maintenance, you've heard us talk about that four hundred million dollar number of deferred maintenance. When we look at the impact of tax incentives over the last four years, we've had a hundred and twenty million dollars of abated taxes. And so when you look at, if those were not all abated, those would, you know, be more money available that we could spend in the classroom or on deferred maintenance. When we look at increases over time, so between fiscal year seventeen and that most recent fiscal year twenty number, our abatements have increased by sixty percent during that time period. So going from twenty-four million dollars a year to thirty-eight million dollars a year. And yesterday, I received some additional historical information from State Finance Department. Looked at overall the city and other taxing jurisdictions within the city. Over that same period of time, their abatements increased by twenty-six percent. So compare our sixty percent increase to twenty-six percent of an increase for everyone else. So one of the things that we talk about is equity a lot, right? So obviously, an impact here. Now, I always like to have this caveat of we know that not all of these revenues would have been generated without the incentive. But our main concern is over-incentivizing those projects. We know that we're granting, you know, often a higher level or a longer term, twenty-five years, and at a higher level, seventy-five to a hundred percent, which is, you know, then diverting critical resources away from schools, libraries, and other public services. So that's where we're stressing our needs. So again, the graphic here on the side should say a hundred and twenty million. But when we try and understand that collective last four years, the impact on us, that's not just incentives that have been granted over the last couple of years. These are historical impacts. So unfortunately, the city does not have all of these documented historically as far as the net revenue impact. But the TIF Commission does. And so I went back through their two thousand and nineteen annual report and looking at some of the plans with the highest abatement impact. And you'll, a couple of things that you note, they're all in the fourth council district. And some of these date back to nineteen ninety-one, nineteen ninety-two, nineteen ninety-three. I know how old I was in those years, and I know we have board members younger than me. So I don't even want to know how old you were in nineteen ninety-one, nineteen ninety-two. But, you know, when you get up to a hundred and twenty million dollars worth of abated taxes over a four-year period, it's because we are still impacted by decisions made in the early nineties. So that collective impact in these period of times, the city was regularly granting twenty-three years of abatement at a hundred percent level. Now, when we look at individual projects, so things that are coming through the pipeline in the last, you know, sixteen months. So this chart shows projects approved by the different agencies since the last time they gave a tax incentive report, board monitoring report. You see the different incentive programs, the number of projects within our boundaries, and the total incentive granted across all the taxing jurisdictions. And I pulled this from the EDC's annual and quarterly reports as well as got information from Port KC. They don't break it out by, in those reports, by individual taxing jurisdiction. But it gives you a sense that during that time period, there's a total fifty million dollars worth of incentives authorized. Couple of project notes. While LCRA had nine projects, we didn't have any objections to those at an appropriate level, appropriate types of projects that we could support. Another highlight, Nostrum Labs is a project that went through Chapter one hundred. We were able, in those discussions with the help of EDC staff, to request paid internships. And so they are excited that as we get out of COVID to start hosting students, and they want it to be a really robust internship. So not just a, you know, file paperwork, but make those meaningful. Couple of things we all know about the next two, BlueScope and Waddell and Reed. But if folks didn't hear, BlueScope did recently announce that they are going to stay in Kansas City, Missouri, even without the tax abatement that they requested. So this is something of note here, that incentive was not needed in order to keep them here. Also, with our negotiations on the Waddell and Reed project, those negotiations and pushback reduced that incentive level somewhere between eight and ten million dollars over the life of that project. And then another project that didn't get as much coverage, but Trax two fifteen, which it might be Trax, like railroad tracks, but I've seen it both ways. This is a project that received both PIA tax abatement and redirection of some TIF revenues. It went through two different programs. They didn't go at the same time. As it went through on the abatement, they ended up getting approved at a level higher than what the book for analysis recommended or said was necessary. That is something that we pushed back on. Unfortunately, when that went to PIA, we were not successful in convincing that board. And because it was PIA, that was a decision to grant a longer and deeper incentive than what the third-party analyst said was necessary. And PIA decisions do not go to city council for approval. So that was made by a separate appointed board. As we look at trying to make sure that we're not granting longer incentives than are needed, we do look at other cities, peer cities, surrounding cities, and see how, you know, are what we're requesting for those lower incentives reasonable. And we've got lots of examples of states and cities reducing the impact of the incentives on their school districts. So a couple to highlight in Ohio, school districts, if you're going to get more than ten years of abatement or TIF of more than ten years at seventy-five percent, school district approval is required. In Minnesota, if you want approval more than fifteen years, two of the three taxing jurisdictions must approve those plans. And then we know there's lots of cities that are granting regularly smaller levels of abatement than what we see standard here in Kansas City. So we've had a lot of discussions around what does meaningful reform look like. Today at council, we did have a new committee sub introduced. I have not had a chance to go through the entire thing because there were some revisions made from the last that we saw. But that recommended ten years at seventy percent and five years at thirty percent as a new standard. It doesn't align exactly with what Kansas City Public Schools and the cooperating school districts have said is meaningful reform priorities or what we're been trying to work towards. It achieves some of the things, but not everything. And so we're going to be continuing to work for additional improvement to that committee sub over the next couple of weeks. And the four areas that we've really been focusing on are, you know, establishing a new standard incentive term, reducing the level over the first ten years and kind of capping that, you know, somewhere in that ten to fifteen-year range. All the reforms should apply across all the incentive programs. Right now, you have different levels that are allowed at different agencies. TIF still allows for seventy-five percent for twenty-three years, whereas PIA allows for seventy-five percent for ten and thirty-seven and a half for the next fifteen. So we're asking for those to be standardized so we don't have incentive shopping from agency to agency. Asking for there to be a consistent and equitable process for all school districts. You've heard us raise concern that we're not included in the process like other districts are. So we're all working to have that consistent and equitable. And then making sure that we really do have targeted concentrated efforts to promote more development activity on the east side that benefits residents, our students, and the community, just allowing for a longer incentive term. And I should preface this, in the discussions that we have been having on meaningful incentive reform, we have talked about exempting those caps for east side development. So allowing a higher level in those more economically distressed areas. But that's not enough. We do need to have some additional targeted efforts to address challenges with accessing capital at affordable rates and other such things. So that needs to be something that the city focuses on. We also have a website that's gone up in the last couple of months where we're providing background information on the impact of tax incentives. It's a way to talk about individual projects, provide background information on how programs work. And for folks who want to stay updated, you can see that we have information there on how to get more engaged. I will close it out by saying, you know, our board has adopted equity policies here, a point zero, that's supposed to underlie everything that we do. This has been a major driver for our discussions around incentive reform. As I mentioned, we're getting impacted at a significantly higher level than any other entity within the city boundaries. We're seeing the majority of our incentivized projects west of TruSt. We are regularly over-incentivizing projects as far as very long. We are regularly over incentivizing projects as far as very long terms and at high levels and wanting to make sure we address those process concerns. And so this is something that we'll continue to push for to make sure we see that meaningful incentive reform. And, you know, we're encouraged by some discussions that we've been having collaboratively with other groups. But we've got, we've got some more work to do. So we'll stay focused on that. And as I open it up to questions, I know Kathleen also has her video on. She's a critical part of this work in advocating for our, our needs in city hall. So want to invite her to help in answering any questions that you may have.
Thank you so much. Was very good presentation. I'm gonna look for colleagues, Ms. Wolfsee. I see you've got a question, so go ahead.
It's not a question because I think most people know, I kind of know this area. I want to commend the, one, Dr. Bedell for your leadership in this area, but truly for putting Shannon and Kathleen on this and the work that they have done over the last, you know, few months, but really almost a year, has put us in a position to be really talking about what I would call true reform for the first time since I've been kind of playing with this or looking into this. So I just want to say thank you because I know that your day does not end at five o'clock. And all the work that you guys have been doing on this really will make such a huge difference to the district, to the students. I, you know, I, I happened to actually listen in on the St. Louis Public Schools Board meeting last night. They are struggling with this same exact issue. It's having impacts across the state. And so I just want to tell you, it is, your, your work does not go unnoticed and most definitely not unappreciated. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wolfsee. I'm looking for other questions or comments, Ms. Cortez.
So again, mine is probably more comment than a question as well. And I do want to let you know that, you know, the reverberations from your efforts are being felt. And I think that's a positive in the development community. There is, I think there are people prepared to engage a more civil conversation on this topic. I actually think there's an interesting dotted line between Ms. Quinley's presentation and yours, which is that we can acknowledge, right, that some level of incentives helped to drive the substantial increase in valuations. The counterpoint to that is if there had been market value assessments done in a timely way in our community, it would have demonstrated the effectiveness of those incentives and allowed us to tailback at a more reasonable rate. And so, you know, the, the, there's a balance between those two factors. And the notion, you know, that I've heard expressed over the years, that the developers will police themselves, the real, commercial real estate community will police themselves to only apply for what they need. It's like suggesting that our students should be giving themselves their own grades. You know, it's, it's, it's an ineffective public policy tool. And so I think the, the, you know, I appreciate the work that, that the district has been doing over the past year and that, and I, and I would just want you to know that I'm hearing about it in a lot of different places in a, in a more respectful and positive way than I've heard in years. So I really, you know, keep, keep engaging us, use us because I think, I think the commit, communities, you know, more ready than it has been for a lot of different reasons.
Thank you. Ms. Wolfsee, I see you're unmuted. Did you have another question?
I do. It's, I remember when we would talk about this with Mr. Tunis, and he used to make a point. And so I may not make this point very well, so I'm just gonna lean on maybe Ms. Quinley. This may not be a Shannon Jackson, Kathleen pointer question. But there was a relationship he used to talk about when property is being abated and the, especially commercial property and the impact that that actually then has on residential property homeowners. So I don't know, Ms. Quinley, are you out there? If you might shed some light as to that relationship?
Yeah, there is a direct correlation under Hancock. So as we talk about if and how Kansas City moves under Hancock with appropriate protections, what happens under Hancock is that each year when you establish your rate, it moves up or down based on assessed valuation movement. And you're entitled to that same revenue as prior year. And so as more properties are abated, it basically pushes a higher property tax responsibility to those real and personal property tax owners who are on the tax rolls.
So you and me.
You and me.
And renters where it shows up in their rent.
Right. Great question.
Thank you. That is a good question. And can we get that on a billboard? Because I think that would be useful. Just saying, I didn't know that. So my question is on the, on where you have the charts of the projects approved and you have the various incentive programs. And I, and I truly don't know the answer to this. How many of those? Each one of those bodies has a board, correct? Like chapter one hundred, LCRA.
TIF. Chapter one hundred does not.
Okay.
But all of the others do. Chapter one hundred is one that goes through city council. So they essentially function as the only board.
Okay, got it.
For that one.
So for the others, how is, are there public education representatives on each one of those?
Sorry, I don't have it pulled up in front of me. So I, I believe that there are. But we do not have representation on all of them. TIF statute provides for school district representation that, that we have two, two seats on that board. And EEZ, there are three different EEZ boards. We are impacted by two of those. We have a seat on one of them. It happens to be the seat that not as much activity happens within. And then for the other agencies, they are all mayoral appointed boards. So the mayor hat, oh, the mayor has taken the step of appointing school district representatives to those boards. We are, we do not, we have not received an appointment to any of those. So other school districts have, we have not. Even though we are impacted by all of those agencies more than the other school districts are.
So that's something that we should all work on.
Due to a lack of us asking. Before that question comes up.
All right. So my other question, this is not anything that has to be answered today. I don't know if it, if it would be useful information or not. But I'm, I'm wondering if we, I mean, I know that this is an enormous problem for St. Louis. And like Ms. Wolfsee, I also was listening to this discussion on the live stream last night for the St. Louis School Board. But do we know how we look against St. Louis, Springfield and Columbia? You, you showed the chart that showed how we stand against Grandview and Raytown, et cetera. But would it be useful to look at some of the other large cities in the state of Missouri just to get a comparison? And, and it may be not. So I'm just curious about that.
Was, I apologize. Was that question for Linda?
Well, it's really, I guess, for you, Shannon, or it could be for Linda. I'm not sure who it is. I'm just trying to get a sense of how we stand in relation, you know, to these other large cities and, and what do those cities, St. Louis, Springfield, Columbia? And I think I have a feel for St. Louis because I think that their voice in this process is extremely limited, maybe even to a greater degree than ours. I'm wondering how it looks in Springfield and Columbia. And it's, it just, is it something that I'm, I'm wondering about? I, I know that other jurisdictions around us, like, are affected by tax incentives, but sometimes seem to have more input, like in a North Kansas City, than we're experiencing. I was just curious about other large cities.
I can't. Oh, sorry.
Sorry, go ahead, Linda. You know, I know you know the Columbia situation. I talk to Springfield a lot, so.
Yeah, I can tell you that in Columbia, to my knowledge, there are still only two abated projects in that community. And they have been highly successful at attracting industry into community over the years. And Iowa, the superintendent and I in Columbia were regular participants in all of the EDC meetings. And we had very collaborative relationship around how we develop, how we grew and developed the economics of our community while also making sure that public ed remained a priority in that decision-making. I'm not as familiar with Springfield, but Shannon probably is.
Oh, I'm not, sorry. We, we have, we have focused more of our attention looking at St. Louis because they have had audits done. They have a very kind of robust TIF reform group. I don't remember what their, their name is. It's something like that. But there have been a lot of studies done, were impacted at a higher level than they are. I know, I know Dr. Terry Ward with North Kansas City School District. I think he's listening to this presentation and I know he's, he's looked at all of that within Missouri in more detail than I have. So I just always rely on his intel. But happy to, to share more of that with you in a, in a board packet.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Great. Let's see, Dr. Bedell, does that conclude?
Yeah, pretty much. I just wanted to make this final remark on her presentation. Thank you, Shannon Jacks, Kathleen, the work you guys are doing down there at City Hall. If Terry Ward's on, I definitely want to thank him and the cooperating school districts, Kenny Southwick and our team. We have done everything that we could possibly do to try to be as inclusive as we can in this incentive reform. And we're not just trying to focus on just the insular aspect of how this impacts KCPS. And so we look at collaborating with other taxing jurisdictions. We're trying to, you know, make sure that it's a fair and balanced system across the whole as it impacts those of us here within our boundaries. The data is the data. We talk a lot about the inequities that this presents and how it impacts our school district and we will continue to do so. But I am thankful that there are a number of partners with other surrounding school districts. They see the data. My superintendent peers have personally told me the things that happen inside of our boundaries would never happen in their districts. And they have been full supporters of wanting to share best practices around how it's being done in their districts as we try to get some type of reform done here inside of the city. So I want to personally thank the number of supporters that we do have out here in terms of other school districts and other board members as we try to, you know, fight our way through this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Bedell, I, I believe that you want to tee up briefly items for the January twenty-seventh business meeting?
Yes, Madam Chair, and I'm not certain that the slide is up, so I'll just read it to you. We have two items, ACI Bowling Architect Agreement for Long Range Facilities Planning. And that will cost five hundred thousand dollars. And we're also going to bring to you a link contract in the amount of four hundred fifty thousand dollars that we will ask you all to take action on next, in two weeks.
Thank you so much. So this brings us to the conclusion of our agenda for this evening. So if there's no objection, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.
Take care, everybody.